Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You can't start the actual agenda until I have Democratic Services there on the right of me, but we can do the introduction to everything. We can do the introduction, but that's not part of the agenda. This is the first meeting of the calendar year for us. We have two new members on the committee, so I would like to welcome them both. Angus Ross, who's very experienced, been Chair of this committee and has been a member of the Planning Committee, the longest now he's joining us again. And the second one is John Jarvis, also very experienced, albeit not working in borough, but has been on the Planning Committee as other councillors. So I think both of them are going to be an asset to this committee, so welcome to vote. As you'll notice, we do have a PA system. Please ensure that the mobile phones are on silent and we don't have a fire drill planned tonight. Can I ask if you're hearing me in the back? You are, it's okay, that's my voice. The proceedings are filmed and will be available on the WBC website. You will see from the camera position that the committee members, council officers and registered speakers will normally be recorded, but speakers may ask not to be filmed when their comments will be audio recorded. The Planning Committee is made up of nine elected members, eight of which are here tonight. I'm going to ask each of the members just to introduce themselves and I'll be starting over there on my left.
Bill Salin, I'm a member for Martin in Woodley.
John Jarvis, I'm a member for Twyford.
Angus.
Angus Ross, a member for Wokingham.
Wayne Smith, member for Hurst.
Michelle Shepherd-David, member for Winch.
Martin Richard, a member for Dorries in Wokingham.
John Coates, I'm Vice Chair and a member for Barton.
Tim Moll, Chair of the Committee from Bouldon, which is in Lowry. And we are supported and advised by a variety of professional council officers and I'll ask the council officers to introduce themselves, sorry on my far right.
I'm Arbeloa, I'm Plarking this committee. My name's Mary Severn, I'm the legal adviser to the committee.
I'm Justin Turvey, I'm the Lead Officer for the Felt Management, here to advise members.
I'm Chris Easton, I'm the Service Manager for Highways, and again advising members on Highway matters.
Thank you. And on my far left I have a number of case officers who I will introduce when their application is brought forward. This is a quasi-judicial committee with formal set procedures and conduct. Firstly, the planning officer will present each application. Then I will call intern only those who are pre-registered to speak. Please come forward to the table. The microphone is controlled by the grey button on the base. The time limit is three minutes. Each category speaker will be strictly enforced, so please ensure you get your key points across within your allotted time. Members of the committee are interested in the quality of what you have to say and not the how you actually speak for. So I emphasise that only those who are pre-registered can speak and that's no others, including town or parish councillors, agents, applicants, objectors or supporters, are permitted to address the committee, ask questions or interrupt the meeting. Following the planning officer's presentation and comments of registered speakers, the Planning Committee members will consider, question and seek clarification for the application and hopefully reach a decision which may or may not agree with the planning officer's recommendation. Finally, a reminder that the local planning authority's role is to determine any valid planning application using local and national planning policy. Our role is not to suggest alterations to schemes, whether they are a good idea or in fact needed, whether they are too costly or whether there are alternative uses. Thank you very much, I shall move on to tonight's agenda. And the first item is apologies. Ask our better apologies.
Only councillor Holter.
Thank you. And now we move on then to the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any amendments to that? No? The chairman saying that we're okay with the minutes? Thank you. And then declarations of interest. Is there anyone needing to add? John?
Item 11 on the agenda, I was an Executive Director, the broker and pounder when time this application was submitted.
Okay. I just want to say you're going to leave the room when that application is discussed. Thank you. And then, item, oh, sorry, Angus.
I don't think I have an interest to declare, but as well explanation, in my previous role as a elected member for Environment, I was involved in the Environment sense in both items five and 10, but I've not been in any way involved with the planning application and I come into this with a totally undermined.
Thank you. Item four, are there any applications to be deferred or withdrawn?
None, Jim.
Thank you. Right, that brings us then on to the first application, which is item five, it's on page 13. It's the land east of Finch Hampstead Road. It's a full application for a change of use of land to suitable alternative natural green space, a SANG. It's before the committee, it's a major development, and the case officer is actually to meet over to you.
Thank you Chair, good evening members. The application for the planning committee is to change the use of 11.23 hectares of undiverted land on the eastern side of Finch Hampstead Road to suitable alternative natural green space. This slide here shows the location of the site. It's to south of Wokingham, Finch Hampstead Road can be seen on the east, and the north Danhams railway line leading towards Basel Second Southampton is on the right hand side. The settlement boundary is to the north of the site, around about here, so this site is within the designated countryside. The proposal to use the land as SANG is a use compatible with policy CP11 of the Woking Borough core strategy in that it promotes access and recreation in the countryside location. It further enhances ecology and leisure at the site. As a preliminary matter, as it will be raised later on, an application has been received for housing on this site here, keep a look on my mouse, for an outline for 250 dwellings. This is a separate planning application and the SANG application has to be viewed in isolation away from that. We have previously considered applications for sites such as Rooks Farm, Claire's Farm, for separate SANGs, and so we must judge its application on its own merits. The application utilises the existing site access from Finch Hampstead Road, which currently serves a couple of dwellings as well as the Wokingham Family Golf Centre, and will lead up to a small car park located here through an existing clearing which will be turned into a track. The SANG, the main SANG area will run through here, there's wooded area here and a informal network of paths, including some boardwalks, will go around the site, and ecological enhancements including additional planting, formalisation of meadows will occur on the site. The borough ecologists and Natural England have been consulted on the application, both are entirely satisfied with the ecological benefits of the application. The nearest dwellings are located here and here, a significant distance away from the development itself, and it's considered that there is significant separation distance to avoid any harm to amenity of neighbours in the area. There is very limited built form on the site, it is restricted to a small car park here for approximately 10 car parking spaces and some boardwalks throughout the site. As a result of the limited additional form on the site, there is not considered to be any material additional flood risk, and the drainage officer is satisfied with the proposal. Using the land formally as all recreation land will lead to a slight intensification of use of the site, however, this is entirely in line with policy CP11 which seeks to promote countryside access to these kind of sites. This slide here shows the existing access. There will not be a significant intensification of use of this access and the Highways officer is satisfied with its use. This shows the track leading up to the site. This is the view from south of the site, the Wokingham Family Golf Centre. As members will note, there is a very strong tree line going across a large part of the site as the site wraps around here, and that's similar from the northern side. This photo shows the, is taken from approximately the location of the car parking area, shows the separation proposed to half-dive close, and this is in the opposite direction where the access will be provided into the existing site. In terms of update, there is little to report. There's a slight change to the wording of Condition Two, where the word 'use' is recommended in place of the word 'occupation' as better fits the urban development, and I've also updated the plan numbers to be approved by members. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers posted. I'd like to invite first of them representing the residents group to come forward first. Justice George Easton.
Sir?
Presentation.
Oh, okay.
There have been an unprecedented number of objections to this application. These are based on a clear sight of recognition that Woodcray is not a suitable or sustainable site in any form of development. The objections include firstly, the National Planning Policy Framework seeks to ensure that SANGs and the homes they mitigate are well planned in the right location and accompanied by appropriate infrastructure. Woodcray is designated in the Wokingham Local Plan as separation land and countryside. According to the NPPEF, unsustainable sites should not be developed. Worse, the sole purpose of this SANG is to facilitate further development on an unsustainable site. Secondly, access to Woodcray is not sustainable for either public or private transport. There is no cycle lane, there is no safe pavement for pedestrian access. The existing pavement to the SANG is very narrow with a deep ditch on one side and a 40 mile per hour A-road on the other. There is no adequate bus service to it. Consequently, the SANG will inevitably increase car use on the Finch Hampstead Road, which is already at capacity. Thirdly, the SANG will be adjacent to a noisy and busy railway line. The site is prone to flooding and much of this is boggy all year round, rendering it useless for leisure activities. The sole purpose of this application is not to provide a usable facility, if I can point to the screen, but purely a means to an end irrespective of whether it is actually functional or desirable. There are nearby sites which offer better leisure space. Within two kilometres there are nearly 50 acres of public recreational green space and over 10 kilometres of countryside rights of way. Fourthly, the Woking District Veteran Trees Associations highlighted serious discrepancies in the applicant's tree survey. This clearly states that eight oaks, estimated to be approximately 200 years old, all with TPOs dating back to 1952, will be felled, including three along the green corridor of the Finch Hampstead Road. The tree survey wrongly states that no trees have been highlighted as potential veterans. In fact, both the Woodland Trust and the Ancient Tree Hunt have classified numerous veteran oaks on the site. The officer's report stipulates that a new tree survey be submitted, clarifying that the three oaks on the road are to be retained, but makes no mention of providing other veteran trees to be felled. We recognise that the SANG may be an acceptable use in the countryside, however, this application would not be made were it not for the housing proposals as recognised by the applicants. It is highly unlikely that the SANG will be implemented in the absence of planning consent for the housing. For these reasons, we ask that the application be rejected on the grounds that the site is not sustainable, but if the committee is not minded to reject it, we request that the application at least be deferred with consideration in conjunction with the housing application.
Thank you very much. I will call David Lee, who's speaking on behalf of the board members, Julian Easandla and Oliver.
Thank you Chairman, that is correct. I would like to point out one minor omission in the members' update. The first paragraph says that, being referred to by Ashley, Rooksness has been considered independently from developments that could potentially serve. The word 'approved' is not being included there. This authority built Rooksness to approve to provide alternative green space for sites which are in the current plan. So that is, I'm afraid, wrong.
Thank you for that.
A SANG is designed to provide alternative green space for new development, not existing development. Very clear of that. So where is the new development? If it is an application not before you tonight, this is for 250 units which will generate at least 150 cars onto the Finch Hampstead Road, which I cannot understand how they could possibly get out onto there. In addition to that, because someone tells you that's not appropriate, this application is premature in respect of this authority's local plan update due date very soon and our preferred sites. You must refuse this application on the grounds of prematurity in respect of future applications not yet considered, and the issue of our plan update and our preferred sites. You may well be told that if you refuse this, we may well suffer appeals. Well, I would say to you tonight, do the right thing. Everybody here goes while this application is in front of you. Do you really think for one moment that the developer wants to give us an ice cream park with no strings attached? If you don't refuse this application, you're letting down not only yourselves, but the residents of this borough and everybody today and in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before I open the questions for the committee, I just would like the officers to come back on a few of the points I took some notes on. I think you made some comments on the 'it's unsustainable' site. The level of access for pedestrian cyclists, there's no public transport, so also commenting on negative traffic. The oak trees that are being proposed to be felled, how many there are and whether that's happening, and I'd also like to understand what would happen if we actually did defer this application tonight. If you just answer those and then I'll open it up to the committee. Go ahead Speaker, please.
I'll take the first, the last two first, if I may. Well, actually, I'll start a different bit, actually, that we really need to separate out these two issues, the 250 houses and the SANG. We can't make a decision based on another application which isn't before, isn't before the committee, and I would also emphasise that just because something is awarded planning permission doesn't mean that it will be built. So it is entirely possible that if this was awarded planning permission and the development wasn't successful in obtaining planning permission for houses in the future and the SANG isn't built, just because something has planning permission doesn't mean this will definitely come forward. With regards to the question for the trees, it's been reviewed by the trees officer and I think this is an issue where the two matters have been conjoined here. One tree report was filed for both applications, which does muddy the waters a little bit, however, in relation to the SANG application, the SANG uses the existing access on the site, which is where the problems with trees were arising because it's proposed in the 250 house application to relocate the access to approximately here, and so that leads to removal of veteran oak trees and some of the visibility displays as well. However, on the, for the SANG application, the existing access is retained along here and it uses an existing field access going into here, which is unmade but clear of trees. The tree and landscape officer has reviewed the trees relating to the SANG application and is satisfied that no certificate trees will be, will be unacceptable to be harmed by the development. The, we'll have to cross that bridge when it comes to the housing application, but the SANG application is satisfactory in tree terms according to the trees officer. With regards to the deferral of the application, little would be achieved through deferral simply for the reason that we would still have to determine this application on its own merits, and so when we look at, in saying we saw both applications on the same night and a decision was reached to approve or refuse the housing application, we would still have to make a decision on the SANG based on its own merits, whether or not the SANG in isolation is acceptable, and we would have to subsequently defend or approve So basically, the decision we make tonight, which would be the same decision that would be made in a month or two months, there will be no other circumstances arising with regard to it. Christian, I'll take the hybrid issues.
I think just picking up on the Highways aspects, SANGs don't typically generate large levels of trips. The purpose of a SANG is to provide green space, formal green space in and around existing and proposed housing. Clearly, also as Ash has mentioned, in this case it is being proposed, potentially maybe for also future development in the future, which isn't in front of us today, so in terms of Highways access, the access existing leading to an existing family golf range, whatever it's used for, and with very low levels of trips expected to be generated, we've only 10 parking spaces for granted, so there is a footpath along Finch Hampstead Road, appreciate it's not obviously up to specification, we typically build our new road to be footpost to, but it's something that is existing and there is facilities that people can walk to that area, and my understanding is people do use that current land already for walking dogs, so it would actually be no different off the kind of formalising.
Chair, can I clarify one further point, please? I'd also like to clarify that although the Rooksness SANG was built by Woking Borough Council to mitigate developments in the borough, it did come before this planning committee and was awarded planning permission by the committee.
Sorry Chairman, that's not what I said.
You've had your opportunity to speak then.
Sorry Chairman, I'm sorry about that.
Right, I'll also, you might go first, just please. I'll ask you a question. You bought Rooksness Farm, I understand it was only for, it was only designed to accept land which was already in the local plan, or in sites that had been agreed, it wasn't for spec.
Rooks, sorry. Rooksness Farm, we still take contributions for Rooksness Farm to offset SPA, SPA provision within 500 and 7 kilometres of the Thames Basin Heath SPA, so any windfall sites have been contributing to the, to the Rooksness site as well.
Okay, I accept that. I've got another couple of things I'd like to say. I think it's very difficult for this to be refused unfortunately. I would suggest though, it's inappropriate being brought now, being brought forward before the houses are brought forward. I'd like to aim the ask for it to be deferred, I'd also like to come on the site visit and I'd like to see it come forward with a housing application. Rashell, then Wayne.
Actually, I'd like to second John Jarvis's idea of deferring this until the housing application actually shows up.
Just one other thing, it would have been nice to see somebody from Clamans come along and explain what they're doing. Okay, Wayne and Angus.
I would support both John and Rashell, because, you know, I think as an authority that have got an existing SDL plan and are currently working on our local plan, I think we should be able, it's, we are, we are, we're in charge of the borough, why can't we insist that they come together? Because it's, it's going to be a major development, and all the things you said Ashley about the distance from the houses, I'm sure, I'm sure these people here would absolutely love this SANG if there was nothing in the middle of it. So I think it's essential that they come together.
Chair, shall I answer? Unfortunately, the borough has a statutory duty to determine planning applications as they are in front of us, whilst it's obviously been the committee's right to defer any item that it chooses to do so. Whatever night you see this on, whatever application accompanies it, you have the statutory duty to determine the application on its own merits, and so whether or not you see it with the other application, that application has to be determined on those merits.
Well then, I support John. We see it on the same night and then we can determine independently on their own merits.
Angus.
Thank you Chairman. Just to slow us off the Rooksness one, the main purpose was to allow small developments, windfall sites around the whole of the south of the borough to come forward in specific areas originally, but that's a bit of a blind for this application. I'm very surprised we talk about car park. Many of the SANGs provided already don't have a car park, because they would be there to provide for recreation of housing nearby. I know that bypasses the cherry of the concern about the development that we now have an application in for. Just like assurance that the tree protection is fully there in the condition, were we to approve this, that a new tree survey must be provided. And to me, the one reason why we should refuse this or put in another condition is, were, I know it's unlikely, but were the SANG to be built and the housing not provided, there is no provision for the maintenance of that area, and that would be absolutely critical, and I think it's a responsibility of the planning committee to ensure that that land would be maintained were that situation to arise, however unlikely.
That is actually a rather key point for why these applications have to be determined separately. The reason why there is no maintenance agreement or programme attached to this application is precisely because it's not related to any housing scheme, and so it would be unreasonable to require the developer to provide such a, such a mechanism. If, for example, members at some point in the future were minded to approve a housing scheme that was dependent upon this SANG, then through a section 106 agreement on that housing development, that is the mechanism by which a maintenance charge can be, a maintenance programme can be controlled, but as a developer-led independent development, we can't require a maintenance plan to be put in place or funded because there is no housing attached to it, and that's the reason why this is presented as a separate item.
Chairman, I'd totally challenge that. How can we allow something to be developed without knowing how that development would be maintained regardless of whether there's any houses? I'd just totally challenge that.
It's because if the developer brings it forward, it, it is not required to meet a Natural England standard if it is not being put forward as mitigation for the Thames Basin Heath for specific housing schemes or windfall housing schemes, and therefore if the developer wants to build a SANG, then that is, that is at their discretion, but if we can't force them to maintain it, we can't force them to keep it open unless it's there justified by housing, for example. So if we were considering 250 houses tonight and members were minded to approve the 250 houses, we could well put in a section 106 agreement requiring funding in perpetuity over a set number of years to fund that. Developments are required to be kept open. Without that there, this is just a privately-led SANG.
Sorry Chairman, I equally do not understand what's being said. It is, somehow we have to ensure that that site would be maintained. It is our duty to preserve that land, and therefore there should must be some provision in this, either as a condition that were it to be built, it must be maintained, or in some way ensure that that land is maintained.
Chair, I was just going to come back on that. At the moment it's open space, and we're not, we don't get any money to keep it as it is at the moment, and what I'm understanding it, the owner of the land is thinking of having it called a SANG, but until there's some houses on it, it is still just going to be open space. So why would there be any maintenance for it? That's what I'm thinking, which is what...
The provision of the...
That's correct.
So just let me also say, good, it's great, or whatever.
That is correct Chair, and actually, Natural England have commented on the application and their, their comments are on that basis. They have no objection because this is a private developer-led SANG. If it was attached to a housing scheme, this is from Natural England, if it was attached to a housing scheme, then they would object because there wasn't funding and a mitigation strategy in place, but as it's not attached to a housing scheme, Natural England have no objection to the provision of the SANG and it not theoretically being maintained in the long term.
Does it do you have a concern there?
No, I think you were right in your point.
Angus, just come back and then we'll move on.
Last, last try almost Chairman. It will be developed, it won't be the land that it is now, it will have ponds, it will have paths fitted to it to be a SANG, and therefore those things are different to what is there now, and they will need to be maintained.
Okay, we've got Malcolm and then Rashell.
I too am quite unhappy with this. What is the rush for this sang? As stated by the officers and by councillor David Lee, it's approval, it unknown doesn't mean it has to go ahead, even if it's approved. But I'm pretty sure that if there isn't a substantial development, which may or may not be linked, I'm sure that the sang won't be developed. It'll just be left as it is. But if that development comes along, then I can't imagine that the developer of the housing would want to be lumped with the cost of something that isn't part of his application. So that's the point spoken on here. Equally, it was said earlier on that not many people actually go to a sang so it's not going to be a problem on the road. Why are you making a sang you don't think anyone's going to be going to? They're not all going to walk from the other side of the workroom to get to it and there is a cycle lane, so you're likely to add to the traffic. So I'm concerned about several things about the location of it and everything else. I would certainly like to visit it and have further information and if possible, to link it to the other very likely linked application. So I would support the deferment.
So just like I come back on the saying about it being rushed, applicants are allowed to bring an application when they want and it is up to them. Comes to the committee and it is up to us to make a decision on it. Right, just anything from the officer? Yeah, there are several issues there. Firstly, we have to determine on its own merits. I don't agree with them too much, but it would be nice to know it needs to be done on its own merits. The other thing, I'm not going to threaten you or anything like that, but the applicant does have the option to appeal against non-determination if we don't make a decision on this and that is their call. But the application would then be viewed on the basis of the information that the recommendation was made on. But members can still defer if they want to defer. But I think it will be some, it will be some time before the housing application is ready to come forward with the committee. And also additionally, the housing application is also a delegated item. It was refused, in which case the committee would need to say that they wanted to list the item if that was the case rather than delegate it to Chair and Vice-Chair.
Did you want to come back on that? Rashell?
I'd like to formally request that we defer this application until such time as the housing application is. Because we have no money for maintenance. We're going to be building things supposedly, or not building things. If we are building things, we're going to be in violation of the conditions of the planning application. So therefore, I would like to see it deferred.
Chair, requiring maintenance payment for this development in isolation doesn't meet any of the tests of the EPG infrastructure contributions or conditions and it would be unreasonable to require infrastructure payments for this development.
I can't imagine anybody wanting to appeal the decision to have a sang when they're not paying for it in any way, shape or form until such time as they actually have a housing development to pay for it. So at least that's mine.
Okay. Mary, you wanted to say to it.
There's too many of these, it's all...
I've got so many. Sorry, I'm listening to you all and I just have, just want to point out something. First of all, of course, as Ashley said, you're entitled to defer it and this is an appeal. Just bear in mind, we may not get the conditions that we want because it's out of our control once goes the planning inspector. The other thing is that, the reason why they've probably, it's a pity that Glavine aren't here, as you've said, but probably they've got the sang here tonight because they know, as Ashley said, that it has to be determined in isolation for any housing development. Even if it came to you the same night as the application for the determination of any of the housing developments that are coming, that will be using the sang, we will still have to determine it separately. So that's unfortunately what we're stuck with. I think what the developer has done here is simply got us getting a sang in place so that they have one less thing to think about, to argue about when it comes up to you, for you, for a decision. If they don't have a sang, they are pretty well stuffed in terms of having to provide one. Sorry, it's a legal expression. If they don't have a sang, they will get, it will get refused. So they're doing this tactically. They're very unlikely, I can't think of at all any circumstances where they will implement this sang without the housing development. So all discussions about paying for maintenance, they're not going to, you know, they're just simply, we can't require it as it is at the moment because it's not being used as a sang. So we can't require any maintenance money. So it'll just sit there in a bayance. I think they're given three years to implement it. They have three years to implement it and they will only implement it, highly likely, they are likely only to implement it if the housing application's given permission. Just explain all that, sorry.
Justin.
Sorry, members, it would be possible to have a negatively weighted condition on this permission where members minded to go with the recommendation, which stated that the sang won't be implemented until such time as an appropriate residential permission was granted. And then the residential permission without prejudice where it appealed aloud. And would then have a legal agreement which takes up where that condition leaves off.
John.
I understand, listen to what Angus said and I understand what you said. And that's why I've suggested a deferment because refusal on the basis of not having anything coming in to maintain it because it's probably not going to get delivered is why I would like to go for a defer.
Justin.
And Chairman, the problem with that is that the office's recommendation would remain the same no matter which committee it was taken to. So if it's taken separately, it would be an approval. Or taken together, the recommendation for this application would still be an approval.
And they're likely to require the infrastructure of any recommendation because it's unreasonable.
Wayne.
Could I just ask you a question, Mary? So if we deferred it, we're not refusing it, can the applicant appeal against the defer?
From Friday, wait a second. Can I just?
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, sorry, that's okay. They could appeal a defer on such, but there's a timeframe for determining an application outside of that timeframe, which is next...
This Friday.
Sorry, this Friday. The applicant can appeal against non-determination of the application. So that they could lodge an appeal whilst the application is still with the council.
But realistically, they're not likely to do that, are they? Realistically, you know...
Okay, Mary.
I think just it's a risk and it's up to you whether you want to take the risk. It's as simple as that. And it's, and also what you have to lose in terms of whether they do go for non-determination, which is a ground for appeal. It's as simple as that, yeah, that's all.
Angus.
If, as Mary suggested, these did at some point come together at a meeting, I still don't see how the maintenance of the sang would be connected because they are separate items. There's the permission for the development and there's the permission for the sang. Surely with the sang, I'm sorry to come back on this point, has got to carry the responsibility for maintenance. Because even if the other application was here tonight, that wouldn't even satisfy that.
It would because the legal agreement would be attached to the, an application for housing. You would require a mechanism for a sang to be provided there. It could be the sang, it could be, it could be other alternative land in the area. But there would be a requirement for them to make some form of sang provision and some form of maintenance payment in relation proportionate to the housing. So we would be secured by a legal agreement on the housing application.
Chris, do you want to add something?
Oh, no, it's only just kind of picking up on, I think the council has, committee has actually, I'm not in planning, but obviously just in terms of just reminding that we've had Matthew's Green sang which is in the North Woking. That came forward as a separate sang application subject to...
It's not in the same borough, it's not in the same ward. It's in Wynnish, it's not in Woking, which is where the sang, where the...
Which is where the houses is. So it was different, Chair, one ward, housing in a different ward and they were both determined separately as with Foxley Lane in Bracknell. Where the sang is in our borough, it's been approved and the housing is in Bracknell, which hasn't yet been approved.
So to add, as well as the Foxley Lane sang approval, I recall Stanbury House, which is at the court at the moment, where the residential development was refused, but the sang was approved.
Rashell.
Since we are the lowest-planted borough in the country, which everybody hears on a regular basis, we have no extra money to maintain this, as Angus has said. And it doesn't seem like there is a reasonable idea to take something on that we might be required to maintain in the future because it is a sang and it is belonging to the borough, I'm not sure.
We wouldn't be taking the sang on without maintenance, without maintenance funds secured by a legal agreement. It just wouldn't happen. There are private sangs in the borough, for example, the sang to the west of Old Woking Road, which the committee saw about a year and a half ago, which was provided on the charity's land. That was provided privately. And in fact, the developer has put about £500,000 into a trust which is there, the maintenance of the site. And if they fail to maintain that site, which is attached to housing, then the local authority have stepping rights. It could take over the sang and use the hard move plans to maintain that sang. And I imagine such a range of debates here if they decide to retain the sang privately and attach it to a housing scheme, I imagine we can have a very similar solution.
That's assuming something, but it isn't actually a fact. We don't know that they will, they could decide not to.
Yeah, but if on day one they said, we don't like our sang anymore, we're not going to do anything with it, the local authority wouldn't have to pay for it. It would become wild again and nobody would be paying any money towards maintaining it, not the local authority and presumably not the developer. But at the moment, that's the way the land is.
John. I mean, we're sitting here talking about something that may never happen. If the houses aren't delivered, it's better to, I think it's a misuse of the planning procedure to be honest with you, who is sitting here talking about it? Let's get it deferred and let it come forward with the housing.
I have a formal motion to actually defer it, so is something like the seconded?
No, we've already... No, John has already put that forward. I believe you said you had seconded it. But I hadn't come to it. As, I am concerned about us deferring it because I can't, I cannot see what we're going to achieve by it because we take it on the same night as the application for the housing. If that was to be approved, then we're going to have to make the same decision on the sang, whether it's a proper, if it fulfills all our policies, yes or no, which would be the same report that we're looking at tonight. If we say, again defer it, wait for the housing application, the housing application is turned down and then on the same night, we can get this application in front of us yet again with the same report, we're going to have to make a decision whether it meets our policies or not. So if we think this does not meet our policies, let's turn it down tonight. And if it does meet our policies, we need to approve it. But as I said, we've had it on the table now that it's been recommended or put forward and seconded. Can I just hear the reasons why you want it deferred before we do that?
Yes, because it, the reason I'm asking for it to be deferred isn't a planning reason. The reason I'm asking for it because it's inappropriate to come forward without the housing application which it's going to support. I think it's foolish sitting here talking about it. It's likely never to be delivered if the house is. But if it is, I'm quite happy for it to come forward at the same time and it will probably succeed. That's why I would not be happy refusing it tonight. Because I think it does meet our, our planning perspective on rules. But I, two things I'd like to do. I'd like to defer and I'd like, I'd also like to visit the site as well.
Chair. Good. Well, Tony, we're just over there. It's inappropriate. If you just pay me the first one, I'll spend it.
Which one is going first, do you want to...
The house becomes first. That forms, then one of this.
Well, thank you for bearing with us, the committee and the President. John Lewis put it forward, I'm just going to ask him to speak on it again.
Yes, I'd like a deferment so we can do a site visit and assess its suitability for the housing coming forward as well, which we'll support.
Right, Rashell, would you like to second that?
Yes.
We all clear on that? So all those in favour, all those in favour for a deferment forward, as John has said? Please, Chair. And that is unanimous, thank you. Can I ask people if you're not staying for the other applications you've... You're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you, we're moving on to agenda item six, which is on page 31, which is the Forest School in Wynnash. It's a full plan application, indoor sports facility with access to Harbilly. It's before the committee, it's a major application.
Thank you Chair. I hope this one's a bit less exciting. The application before the committee is for the erection of a large indoor sports facility and itinerary features by Reading Football Club on land at Forest School, which is an academy. The football dome will provide enhanced facilities for Reading Football Club, the community and existing pupils of the school. Forest School is located within a settlement limits of Wynnash. The playing fields at the school are located to the rear of the educational buildings. They've got one set of playing fields here and another set of playing fields detached to the north of Arbor Lane. The proposal is to erect the football dome here. Longwood City members may remember we approved a six-form centre here about three or four years ago and the football dome is proposed to the west here. The football dome will be entirely enclosed and will have an astroturf base and a tensile structure over the top of it which is inflatable, although it doesn't really look like it. There will also be changing rooms here and car parking as well. The facility will be accessed to Arbor Lane. This access was approved during the six-form centre application approximately three years ago. The dome will mainly be used for football and will be subject to a community use agreement. The community use agreement basically portions up the day between use by the football club's academy players, by the community users, people playing far beside, and also by the school who get a large chunk of the time for educational purposes. The application's been viewed by Sport England and by the FA who have, the FA have no objection to it and know it assumes technical specifications. And the football club are also enhancing the other pitches to the north of Arbor Lane to give further pitch provision as part of the application. Sport England have no objection to the lost playing field and the building is a significant enhancement to the sporting offer at the site and therefore it's a bonus for the community and the school. The nearest residence are located to the west, I think it's approximately 40 metres away, I'd say. And to the rear, to the south, there's another railway line which separates the development from the development to the south. To the north, there's a substantial separation to Arbor Lane and the east is separated by the existing school. This is the dome, it's approximately 66 metres long, 10 and a half metres high and 43 metres wide, incorporating a football pitch. So as you see, it's a slightly reduced football pitch, but it's... So as you see, it's a slightly reduced football pitch, but it's very suitable for academy use and for school use. And here are the views from the, from Arbor Lane. As you see, it's well vegetated. This is where the existing access is, although it hasn't had the enhancement works approved under the six-form centre permission yet, but all along the boundary, it's pretty well screened. The application's attracted very limited public interest. We've had three objection letters, mainly relating to intensive use of the site, some about the size of the building, and the use of Arbor Lane are the predominant issues raised. The site has disabled access from Arbor Lane, and the access is considered to be acceptable by the highway authority. The good thing about this development in particular is that there's very little clash with the peak hour period because of the timing of the community use predominantly in the evening and off-peak periods, and other times it's used by academy scholars. The football club currently enjoys a relationship with the Forest School, and lots of its academy scholars actually attend Forest School as well, which is a big bonus. But also, obviously, people using from the school won't be generating highway movements. The use is entirely indoor, so that helps limit anything such as noise, because the sound is trapped inside the building, and also light spinach. It isn't like a traditional astroturf pitch where you have external flood lighting, so that helps with that issue as well. It's considered by officers that there will be no harm to residential amenity and that the leisure facility provided will be a high-quality asset to the borough. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have joint speakers, Nina Shaw from Barton Wilmore and Peter Jones from ALP Transport. Are you just renting your time, or is it just yourself going to be doing it?
I will be speaking. Sorry. I will be speaking. My colleague, Peter Jones, is on hand, just in case of any questions. Good evening, Chair members. The application that you have to forward you is for a new indoor sports facility at Forest School in Winers. Dome will be an existing, in addition to the existing facilities at the school, and will provide a positive addition to the existing sports pitches, both north and south of Arbor Lane. Reading Football Club formally signed a partnership agreement with the school in July 2012, which sees the young academy players joining the school for their educational division. The lightweight, high-tech dome incorporates a whole weather surface and enables physical activities for 1,200 students to take place all year round, now aside whether lighting or access being a limitation to the academic environment. Reading Football Club have worked positively with the school as part of the application and have used the opportunity to enhance the existing landscaping along the boundaries of the southern playing fields and enhance the existing biodiversity of Winers too. In addition, the proposal will result in enhancements to the existing normal playing fields too. The facility will not only be used for Forest School pupils and Reading Football Academy players, but also for community groups and clubs too. The community use agreement is now in place with the school and the club, which has been approved by the school. It's borne with governors, Sporting World and Football Association, which will ensure certainty over future uses. The club consider that the facility will not only be an asset to Reading Football Club, but also to the community, and will provide an opportunity to develop some long-term aspirations for the school, the council and the community alike. We support your officer's recommendation and respectfully request that we have this kind of permission. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward member Rochelle.
I'm a little curious about why it's here and not in the new place that they're building off of Mall Road of Happelwinch. We had a big giant training area in...
Rochelle, as we know, we have discussed what's in front of us.
I do like the idea of having community use here with that. The community definitely appreciate that. I think it's a good idea for the area.
Angus, were you in the case, Chair?
Yes, Chairman. Of course, the benefit of this is it's far nearer to the community use, and of course, it's where the Reading academy pupils are at fault during the day. I'm delighted to see this. Nothing to do with planning, but I always regret ATP's severity for football, that's another matter. On the report, I'd just note that it would appear that the sports development team here will not consult team, or if they were, it wasn't recorded. And it's just a note, such things I think should go through those parts, but I'm very much in favour of this proposal.
Malcolm.
Yes, I'm very much in favour of this. Just a couple of quick questions there. It's an inflatable thing, you say, with the front end. Is it sort of translucent type material? Is it, can you see through it?
No, you can't see through it. It has the appearance of it relatively solid and rigid. The proposal is currently to have a green colour, so it blends better with the vegetation in the background, but you can't see through it. It's surprisingly rigid if you need to touch it.
And whether it'd be, presumably electric inside for lighting and things, will it be, I assume it's going to look like a big bulb, but it advertised it. Is it, is it going to be used tonight, and will there be lighting and can you see through it?
It shouldn't be, I believe, but you want to answer, Nina.
The dome is actually capable of reflecting the light within it, so there will be light within it, but it won't emit light, so it won't look like a light bulb or anything like that. It would actually be quite dark, and it's indeed used in David Gordon Leisure Centres and things like that in sort of residential apartments.
I'll have to answer. Thank you. I wonder if there's anybody else wants to speak, Rochelle? No, come back here for the final comment.
I just hope that the academy brings some better players, so Reading will actually promote us.
Thank you, Rochelle. Okay. But members, we have the recommendation then on page 32 to approve with the conditions as set out, and in the members' update, there is a change to condition three. So all those in favour of approving this application, please show. And that's approved unanimously. Thank you, members. We're just going to have a one-minute break if anybody wants to use the facilities. Right, thank you for bearing with us there. Agenda item seven then, page 63, which is the Crossfield School, Shinnfield Road. It's a full application for astroturf pitch, floodlighted, regrading of the land for two new football pitches and an artificial cricket strip. It's before the committee as its main application, and the case officer is Pooja Kumar. Over to you, yourself.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members. The application site is located within the settlement of Shinnfield and within Crossfield's school playing fields, which is an independent school. Site is accessed from Shinnfield Road, which is a classified road, and main through route into the centre of Reading from adjacent settlements. The proposed artificial turf pitch is located on the top right of this image and would measure approximately 99 by 61 metres. There is an existing grass pitch in this location which would be replaced. The proposed artificial pitch also includes mesh fencing all around its four sides and lighting. The second element of the proposed development is the regrading of land within the playing field to provide grass pitches. The proposed pitch is at the top left-hand side and to the bottom of the playing field here via regrading of the land to provide a training grid adjacent to the white house and two football pitches and a cricket strip in the centre of the field. The proposed, the proposed artificial turf pitch would have six 13-metre-by-lighting columns, and similar to those in this end elevation, the mesh fencing would be a height of 4.3 metres behind the goal area, 3 metres everywhere else. The bottom plan illustrates the light spill from the proposed lighting to the pitch, demonstrating that any light spill would be enclosed within the playing field and school buildings and would not extend to nearby residential properties. The proposed football pitches will be located centrally within the playing field on an area of land which is currently sloping to the west. The proposal aims to cut into the field on the eastern side and fill the area to the west to create a flat area for the pitches by approximately 2.5 to 3.5 metres. These pitches would not have any external lighting or fencing. This aerial view of the playing field imposes the plans of the proposal onto the school field. It can clearly be seen that the proposed pitches will be contained within the existing playing field. The darker areas illustrate where the land is sloping. In respect of highways, there are no objections to the proposed development. The main uses of the pitches would be the school, and any users of the artificial turf pitch outside of school hours will be able to use the existing hundred-car parking spaces that are at the front side. Again, the site is in a sustainable location and within settlement limits. Sport England have been consulted and have raised no objection to the application, however, they have requested that a community use plan to be agreed with themselves and with the local planning authority, which is secured by condition 13 of officer's recommendation. This document is to include details of how non-school users would access, park and use any facilities on-site. In respect of neighbour amenity, the proposed pitches are considered to be of an acceptable distance from nearby neighbours to ensure no detriment in respect of noise and disturbance. The hours of lighting are restricted by condition nine and luminance levels are restricted by condition 10. Further details for light specification and factors to minimise light spill are also required by condition eight. Subject to these conditions, it is considered that there would be no adverse impact on neighbour amenity. In respect of protected species, our biodiversity officer has considered that a condition requiring details of light spill mitigation would be sufficient in this instance to ensure that there is no adverse impact on the protected species of bats. These are some photos from the officer's site visit, demonstrating the sloping land levels, and also the dense landscaping that surrounds three sides of the site. Subject to the conditions outlined with the officer's recommendation, the application is recommended.
Thank you. We have one question to speaker, Neil Hodington, the agent.
Good evening. Good evening. I don't think I need to keep you long, insofar as we're working with Pooja for nearly a year now on this. I think we're nearly there. We're very pleased to be able to offer some community facilities, as we have already. We've got a ticket up with the swimming pool. It's a sports field and will remain so, and we can do what we can to enhance biodiversity.
Sure, on speed, thank you. If you just press the button to the light, yeah. Thank you. Right, members, Sue, let's see.
I'm very much in support of this type of application, obviously, but just disappointed Reading Borough could object on the basis of insufficient information. It's impossible for us to get insufficient information.
Chairman, I think our officers were confident that there was sufficient information to come to a decision, albeit that Reading may not have been...
Any other member wishing to add to the question, ask any questions? Rochelle?
I just like the idea that it's got community access as well. I think that all schools are after the access to the playing field itself and have more areas of transport as well.
Definitely agree with you there, thank you. Right, members, we have the recommendations set out on page 64 for approval, with the conditions set out. There are no changes on the members' update. All those in favour, please show. And that is unanimous. Thank you, members. Right, next item is agenda item eight, which is on page 93, which is the Broken Theatre in Twyford Road. It's a full application for additional backstage space, rehearsal space, new studio, public circulation areas, new storage barns, so also some additional seating and car parking. It's before the committee, it's a major application, and the case officer is Peter Jones. Chair.
Thank you, Chair. The proposal site is at the existing location of the Broken Theatre, which is within County Park off Twyford Road, as indicated by the arrow. The site is also located close to the North Woking SDL, which is indicated by this pink dot dotted area to the west and to the north. The site is also located within the countryside. These photos are of the existing site and views of it from within County Park, for personal context. So number one is the current front entrance, which faces to the side. Number two is views of the side of theatre from the south of Crossfield. Photo three is looking towards the church parking area. Number four is the other side of the building. And five is views of the backyard building from this side. Broken Theatre is an amateur repertory group that's been located in County Park since the mid-1980s. The proposal is a response to the space constraints had within the theatre. The space within the theatre is under intent use, and the lack of established space constrains activity within it. Aside from the stage area, there is an accommodation space with the bar/foy area being used, which is part of the building. Numerous shows operate at one time, creating issues of scheduling and the media use space of the site. The proposal seeks to extend the theatre and its storage capacity in order to provide facilities requiring for the operation of the theatre. This consists of an erection of two-storey, seven-storey extensions around the building, a new storage barn to the rear of the site, the addition of 17 parking bay of the building site, with the increase of auditorium seats, one for each one. The resulting volume of the building is around 25% compared to the original. The proposal increases the height of the building. The existing bridge height is 7.7 metres. The front gate element comes up to 9 metres. But the highest ridge of these extensions is 7.8, so it's similar to the highest part of the original building. The width of the building would also increase by 12.2 metres, and would be around 6 metres deeper. That's the foundation elevation. That's towards the east. Towards the south. And that's towards the west. This is the image of the storage barn, which will be located to the rear of the site. And that's the same done. So these are the extensions. That's part of the original building, that's the storage barn, and here are the parking places. The recommendation to approve this application is on my list. This is set out in more detail in the committee report. The proposal is located within the countryside, and development within the countryside is strictly controlled unless other material restrictions state otherwise. The theatre should also normally be located within town centres. However, in assessing this proposal, there are a number of material mitigating factors that mitigate or diminish the harm that otherwise be caused by the proposal. The theatre has existed on this site since the mid-1980s and has been extended. The site is also within close proximity to the North Woking SDL, which is located north and the west of the site, which will increase development in and throughout the area, but also enhance transport movement to the site. Whilst the proposed extensions and outbuildings are large, they are well-designed, and due to the size of the site, with not significantly spread development across County Park and Arbor Lane. Fortunately, the proposed will provide significant benefits as a community facility. Existing uses include altered facilities, include both the pantos, chatty band concerts, and the city as a base... and the city as a base for events up to County Bar Works and Wokingham Art Marathon. The proposed additional community benefit here is ability to acquire and lease rooms within the theatre. The proposal enables this and the currently used space within the theatre constrains this and the increased size of theatre with new facilities within it would enable more groups to use it. This would include an art auditorium, practice rooms, special equipment, which would provide important space for performance practice and restoration of the arts. The potential uses suggested by the theatre include local school groups, performance space, exhibition areas or general facilities for community groups. A community management plan is required by condition four, where this can be secured as a start on balance. Whilst proposal would be located outside town centre within the countryside, the merits of proposal would outweigh the harm of the support. Some concerns were raised regarding to issues of parking. The existing site does not include formal parking provision within the site. A relaunch has had an existing parking base within County Park. The proposal would result in increase of forty-one auditorium seats. However, the proposal would provide seventeen bays within the site, which complies pretty with the council statutes for the extension. The closest residential properties to the theatre are located some forty meters away. The proposal would result in addition forty-one seats auditorium and is likely to result in increased use by theatre, by community and other groups. There however, the theatre is in existing use and given its distance from these properties, it is considered that proposal would not result in harm to residential community by non-essential. Just to go through the changes outlined in the members' update, the description has been revised to include the number of auditorium seats increased and the parking bays. The clarity divided on the nature of the community is divided by theatre. Condition two, which lists the plans, has been revised to include an updated plan, which moves indoors from foundation elevation. And condition four, which is a community management plan, has been revised to strengthen it. And the construction management plan has been added officially. Therefore, this application is recommended for approval subject to conditions as stated in the members' update. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have pre-registered then Patrick, Haron, Hedgerburn and Katie Hamilton coming forward. Are you sort of, is one of you speaking or are you speaking in the room?
I think it'll just be these two speaking. I'm trying to be here to answer any questions if otherwise.
Do you want to know when you've had one and a half minutes or are you imagining?
Yes, I imagine it one and a half minutes.
Okay, away we go then.
Members of the council, we're really.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you, Angus.
Members of the council, thank you very much for giving us the time to talk. We're so excited about our proposal. I don't know if any of you have been to our theatre. We put on nearly a hundred nights of theatre every year. Nobody came and is entirely voluntary. We have a membership of around two hundred and eighty-six adults. We have a further hundred young people belong to our youth theatre. If you've walked around the building, you will see that there is not a single ounce of space that is not used. There are costumes under every bit of the auditorium. There is lighting hanging from the back of the bar. It is absolutely stuffed. We would dearly love to involve more people in our audience. Most of our shows are virtually sold out. We are amateurs. We cannot do more than ten nights of performance. We simply don't have time when we're working. We want to extend our auditorium so that we can enable about twenty-five percent more people to attend each of the shows we put on. The additional rehearsal space and scene doc space will enable us to turn around shows more frequently, which means we can let other members of the community use our facilities about which we're hugely excited. We already let people come in, St Sebastian's Ban, other charities. We have people there during the day, such as Zappers who run hair training, hairdressing training. The building is absolutely maxed out and we have spent a lot of time developing this so that we can build it without our own costs and create what we believe will be an enormous cultural heritage for the people of Wokingham at no cost to the council.
I'll be brief on you as an ordinary member of the Woking Theatre. I've been involved with amateur theatres around the country all of my life and I've never been involved with an organisation like Woking Theatre. It was built on that current site through the passion of a group of people who fundraised, worked so hard, badgered and goaded people to get a facility on their site in the first place and since that time it has gone from strength to strength. You walk through the door at any time of the day and it is full, a whole cross-section of people from youngsters eight up to eighty plus up, either involved in theatre work or all the other ancillary jobs that go with running a theatre facility of this. We are so excited. We know that we can develop the community use of this even more with this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask for a minute, which one of you ladies is head of?
Me.
Right, okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, thank you very much. Can I ask, go and councillor David Lee, the ward member, to come forward and talk to us? Well, good evening, Dave.
Thank you very much. I'm actually in favour of this one, in case you didn't get it, I was against the other. I mean, our predecessors, some years ago, took the decision to give permission for a volunteer at their expense to build an excellent facility in this time and for this borough and it has gone from strength to strength. For those of you who haven't been and horrified if you haven't been, it is a brilliant facility on our land and as was pointed out by one of the ladies, at no cost to this council. So they took that decision. I don't believe that there is any question that you're not going to approve this. I think Katie has done an excellent job on it and I thank you for that as a user of the theatre and the councillor that covers this area. It's a brilliant facility and I'm sure we will support it. And I may just, if I could, ask, and I don't know whether it is needed, but we're recommending this for approval for a three-year period. It may well be, maybe I'm wrong and you can correct me, that you may.
Maybe in three years.
Sorry?
Since we're convinced in three years, I don't think it's a temporary approval.
No, no, no. Sorry, the permission visa has to start within three years, but you may need an extension at some point and I'm sure the committee or the officers would look favourably upon that, assuming it will not be finished within the time. Or a section will not start. I'm not suggesting that is the case. I'm fully endorsing this recommendation. I hope it can all prove, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just look quickly before I come to you now, because I was just going to answer David's question, I'm right thinking you just had to start the application, don't you? It doesn't matter a certain bit, it hasn't been started in three years.
Depending on the description, it also is started, there's no force of finishing it unless it's specified in conditions etc.
Malcolm is ward councillor.
I'm very pleased with this request and I'm fully endorsed it. I've been aware of the theatre there for some time. I'm embarrassed to say I haven't been to see a show yet, but I am really aware of its popularity. I'm told it's fully booked for pretty well everything. So expansion of it is worthwhile, not only for a bigger audience but for preparation for rehearsals. So that's all a good thing. I've got a quick question about the parking, that's all. It says that forty odd seats, forty one seats there require eight parking bays and this takes it up to seventeen. Is that after you've removed the seven parking bays in the front of the building? So are you left with seventeen? Or it would have been twenty-four if you'd not removed the seven. I'm just calculating the partial numbers.
They're not removing the seven at the time.
Oh, so they've moved several parking bays to the front of the building. They're just moving to a different place?
No, I think that might be, is that right? Because they're not.
No, no.
They originally get to move the seven and that's not happening, that was changed by application. But yeah, in terms of auditoriums, there's a common one space per five seats, obviously that's where the calculation came from. They had informal parking, they only required the eight, but the seventeen being provided to the rear of, so basically they provided more than was necessary.
Of course, I approve of the application. I'm glad you said that, you're not bringing it in to go there, you should have declared an interest.
Yes, I have been. Yes, I do approve this. And of course, it is now much closer to more housing as North Woking S D L comes on stream. And I think the car parking discussion is a bit of a blind really because there's a lot of parking space there. It just depends how many footballers happen to be there at the same time. I don't think that's something that we can control at any time. So the fact that there's more parking is obviously a good thing. I've just got one question. The condition four talks about approving a community use management plan. And I just wonder who will be involved in seeing that plan when it comes forward and whether local members will be able to comment on it.
Yeah, Chair, yes, that would be quite possible for it to be agreed in conjunction with ward members if members felt that appropriate.
So thanks for speaking for us, we would like that, so what do we need to do to get that?
That's why that has just been noted.
Okay, thank you. Right, Bill?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm in support of this, I think it's a wonderful facility, even though I support Woodley Theatre at the Woodland Centre. It's obviously quite a big increase in the size of the premises and I'm just asking the question about upgrading five percent, five regio, five warnings and that sort of thing, is that would be taken into account?
Things like fires, fire ring, insulation sprinklers, that sort of thing, is all dealt under building control, so it's not under planning.
It's not commissioned at all?
No, not under planning, it'll be under a separate process under building control, should be dealt with that.
Thank you.
So I also work at this facility, I know to do a bit back to myself, not that theatre, but my Ben Gunners renowned in Arthurfield. But I just, my question I'd like to ask is, how much is the increase on the actual building? What is the percentage?
In terms of volume, it's a hundred and fifteen percent.
Any other questions, members? No? Okay, on page ninety-four then, we've got the recommendation for approval, where the conditions are set out in the agenda, plus in members' update, there's amendment to condition two, amendment to condition four, which we're also including that the ward members be involved with, and then there's the additional condition number ten. So all those in favour, please show. And that is unanimous, thank you members. I have changed item nine, which is on page one hundred and nineteen, which is the Highland Word, the primary school, Fairwood Drive in Woodling. Full application for six classrooms, speech and language building, additional staff parks and a cycle canopy, protection route from Woodson Avenue and reception classroom garden. This is for the committee, as the applicant is Wokingham Borough Council and the case officer is Daniel Ray.
Thank you, Chair, good evening, members. The hybrid school is within the South Lake Ward in Woodling. Site is located to the south of Woodlands Avenue, with the main entrance and the car park on the east side of the site off Fairwood Drive. So the immediate south and east are residential dwellings. To the north is the Bullish Pleasure Centre, whilst to the west is the Bullish Pavilion and associated sports pitches. The existing school benefits from playing fields both the north and west, whilst the hard standing playground is to the south of the building. The application seeks to make a number of alterations to facilitate a two-form entry to the school, with a number of students increasing capacity from two hundred and ten to four hundred and twenty pupils. To achieve this, an additional six classrooms are proposed. This would be contained in one block to the north of the main building. The proposed block would be sited east-west and would have a total length of forty-eight metres. The height of the eaves of this block would be two point seven metres, with an overall bridge height of seven point six metres. In addition, a new speech and language block is proposed. This is contained within the main bulk of the building and would be seven metres by six and a half metres in size with a flat roof, the height of which would be three point eight metres. A number of internal alterations and rearrangements to provide additional classrooms is also proposed. Minor fenestration alterations to corridors and a new garden for the preschool building. Increased provision for cycle storage and staff parking will be provided, as well as a new pedestrian footpath access from Woodland Avenue. A landscaping condition would ensure replacement trees are introduced and enhancements made to ensure the character and appearance of the area of the site as a whole is protected and improved. The main extension for the additional six classrooms is single-storey nature. The proposed structure would be of brick construction under a profiled metal roof. Whilst the design is a departure from the existing aesthetics of the building, the single-storey extension would provide a greater variety of roof heights within the site and be a more long design that would complement and improve the aesthetic character of the building while being appropriate in appearance for its use. The proposed speech and language block would blend in with the existing building form, again of brick construction. Condition eleven requires some old external materials to be submitted and agreed, thus ensuring that the brick used would either complement the existing materials or provide a sufficient position that would ultimately improve the character of the building. This would be assured through this condition, technically decided or would be desired by exclusive construction. The proposed development would provide an expansion to the school to cater for increased population of the area. There will be no undue impact on the character and appearance of the area, whilst having no effect on the residential amenity of neighbouring residents in terms of building form causing no overlooking, overshadowing or overbearing impacts due to the distance from residential properties. The site's fortunate benefits from ample playing fields and outdoor play area, whilst the proposed extension to the north does impinge on existing sports fields, this is minimal, more than ample provision of playing fields would remain. Understandably, concerns regarding the number of car parking spaces for staff is being raised, as is arrangements for pick-up and drop-off of students. The application proposes an increase to parking space number from thirty-two to sixty-six, whilst staff members are to increase to fifty-one full-time equivalent members. The council's parking standards require one space per full-time member of staff and this proposal therefore provides over-probation in this regard. Furthermore, condition six requires the submission of a new travel plan that shall ensure that disruption to the local residents is kept to a minimum during drop-off and pick-up. Overall, the proposed development has been well considered and will provide additional vital school bases. The improvements that again through this application are welcome, whilst the character and appearance of the area should be maintained and enhanced. Proposed parking is more than adequate and the proposed extensionary alterations are far enough away from neighbouring residents not to impact them negatively. Therefore, subject to the use of the conditions proposed, as stated in the committee report, this application is recommended for approval. Thank you.
We have one speaker pre-registered, which is Andrew Sharma from Wokingham Borough. Would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening. Apologies for my phone ringing earlier. I'm Andrew Sharma from Strategy and Commissioning Place to talk in support of the hybrid expansion. The council has a strategy due to ensure that there are sufficient school places in the borough for every child. In January twenty sixteen, the council is likely to agree with the Primary School Plan Strategy twenty sixteen eighth to eighteen. Woodley was identified as an area with rising roles, which meant that additional capacity would be required. The strategy identified a need for forty-five additional school places per year, four hundred. Fifteen places, school places per year are being provided at Beach with Primary School, which has already had the group planning approval, and hybrid primaries are identified as a second suitable site for expansion of thirty school places per year. If approved, the school will provide thirty additional places per year or two hundred and ten. If approved, the school will provide thirty additional places per year, or two hundred and ten additional school places across all age groups. This would increase the school's admission number from thirty to sixty, and the capacity from two hundred and ten to four hundred and twenty places. One of the key drivers for the proposed increase is that the planning, that the planning consent has been granted for nearly a thousand homes in the area. The number of pupils generated per year by these homes will be dependent on how quickly the houses are built. And these sites are an impactive development. In the long term, the new houses are likely to generate over thirty pupils per year over the next year, eight years. And in the short term, we generate significantly more than this. Highland Primary was identified as a suitable site as it's near many of the new developments, with a large site area, and has the Highland Annex, which currently houses office staff for the council, which would be handed over to the school to provide additional classrooms, and thereby reducing the number of new classrooms that we're building. So for those programs of works, we enable the school to accommodate a permanent increase in pupil numbers. The school facilities will be improved by going in a larger hall, teaching accommodation with classrooms built to more than acoustic and environmental standards, additional parking for staff, and a specialist unit for speech and therapy. Other facilities will be retained as they are. In summary, I hope the committee can support a proposal that ensures the council can deliver the primary school places would be needs in the right location, with satisfactory proposals for traffic mitigation, and which will give the school facilities the facilities it needs to continue to offer a good education to local families for a growing population.
Right, thank you very much. Bill?
Yes, thank you. Whilst, you know, I appreciate the need to ensure that there's sufficient places for children of Woodland, which has considerable increase in the numbers of properties being built. I think I can echo Woodling Town Council's concerns and a number of the residents' concerns over the parking and dropping off of the youngsters during the time. We're doubling the intake up to four hundred and twenty, we're talking about considering, I can't see even with the best travel plan in place, that we're going to be able to see a decrease in the problems that people in Fairwater Drive and King Fisher Road are actually facing. So I need, I would hope that the planning would consider the serious problems that are being faced there already, and obviously could get potentially much worse with this development. As I say, I fully support the proposal.
Chris, can I add?
Yeah. It's kind of, I've heard many times the schools, I mean, I think it's every school in the country, never mind the southeast, which is kind of congested in relation to, you know, our neighbourhoods. The school's providing the parking in line with the council's standards, it's actually exceeding the parking standards in relation to the full-time group of staff. I appreciate that there is a doubling in terms of pupils, but it's over a period of eight years. And we've obviously got that ability to work closely with the school, with the local parish councils, to kind of deliver a meaningful travel plan. They have travel plan ready, which is a good start, some schools don't have. And obviously the condition that we've got to kind of operate that gives us additional benefits. We've also, some members may be aware, this is obviously outside of this plan discussion, but being the council owns and operates all, which I just said to him, is looking to potentially regenerate that. There's that, Mr Pavilion, so I know there has been some conversation around the potential of sharing some of those parking spaces and areas for pick-up and drop-off. But that's something that, you know, we need to, that's outside of this, well, with this application as it stands, we have potentially eight years to kind of develop this travel plan to improve things, as well as work with traffic management, who look after the existing road network to see where potential improvements can be made. But as the application stands, there's nothing directly related at this moment in time to secure against a scheme to do any highway improvements, the junctions work. It doesn't drop off, he says it is.
I'd just like to add, appreciate that there is a problem around that school, but when we're looking at the application, if this application's going to make it any worse, so the parking and the drop-up has to deal with what we're approving extra that we're approving, it doesn't have to make it better than it was. If it does, that's clearly a benefit.
From the start, we're actually getting an increase, I mean, saying, okay, it's over a period of eight years, but from the start we're getting an increase. So I can just see an increase in the problem from the start. And I see that it's going to, it's not going to stay the same, I can see an increase in.
Anybody else? Angus, and then John?
Two points, on the parking, I think one shouldn't hold out too much hope of additional space around Bullmush Leisure Centre, with the increase in activity around there. Anyway, time will tell on that. I see Sport England hadn't objected, but it'd be interesting to know how much playing field space is being lost by this development.
I couldn't tell you the exact things, but if I, that is the extension that's going, that is taking up any of the space here. But going back one, most of this is actually already hard standing, it's associated with the existing car park. So it is really minimal in terms of going into the playing field, and doesn't affect the actual formal activities where the running track is and the grass and things like that. So really, they were happy because it won't affect the ability of the playing field to provide what they need.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go straight to Michelle then.
I would actually like to see the borough for a change look at part drop-off and pickup of students, and consider doing parking when they start a full form to a school, they put in enough parking spaces for these extra additional students, parents.
Anybody else? No more questions? On page one hundred and twenty then, the recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions as listed out in the agenda. In members update, there are no additions to it, so all those in favour of approving this application, please show. And what's going, that is unanimous, thank you, members. Change to item ten then, on page one hundred and thirty-three, Rice Green Sports Centre in Spencer Wood. Full application for a sports changing facilities and fitness suite, following demolition of the existing building. This before the committee is a major application, and some members of the committee would have been on a site visit just over a year ago, I was one of those people. I'll hand over to Christopher, okay?
Thank you, Chair, good evening, members. And the scope of the development of Rice Green, and the subject of this planning application, is the refurbishment of the existing Four Courts Sports Hall, demolition of the adjoining single-storey changing block and nearby former music block, destruction of a new changing pavilion with reception, multi-use hundred square metre clubroom, and two hundred and fifteen square metre fitness suite with four hour stations, along with associated access and car parking improvements. And the purpose of this development is to re-establish Rice Green as a venue for sport and recreation through the renovation of the old sports hall. The new build elements of the proposal aim to provide facilities that support the recently completed floodlit artificial grass pitch development, presented under the Planning Reference one six one two five O, and improve natural turf pitches, as well as save the needs of the sports hall. The site of the proposed development is located at Rice, to the southwest of Hyde End Lane, and is within the south of the M4 strategic tournament location. The site is located on the currently boarded up sports hall, changing facilities and music block, which is originally used by the former Rice Green School. The newly opened Oakbank School does not currently use these facilities, but will become a use of the new facilities, including a natural grass playing pitches to the west of the development site. And this slide shows the present derelict condition of the existing sports centre, seen in the picture to the bottom left, and the changing facilities in the picture at the top left. And this slide shows the derelict music block, which would be demolished as part of the proposal. And this picture illustrates the location of the sports hall next to newly approved artificial grass pitches. And at present, there are twenty-nine parking spaces at the north of the site. A building shown here would be removed and demolished, and an additional thirty-one spaces added. The existing Rice Green Leisure Centre is accessed from Hyde End Lane. The proposal seeks to use the existing access arrangements, and no changes to this are proposed. As the site has a former use, this arrangement is acceptable. The proposal currently has protection links to the site on Hyde End Lane. The provision of footpaths and cycle links will also be enhanced by the delivery of the housing growth in the wider area, and is being secured through the Spencer's Wood Three Mile Cross Walk and Cycle Strategy. These will provide attractive alternative routes for future users. In terms of the wider highway network, although the use of the site will increase vehicle activity, the highways opposite is satisfied that there is sufficient capacity in the area. Therefore, access and parking provision are considered acceptable. Sorry. This line shows the proposed site plan for the application. So north of the site, there are three existing buildings which would be removed and demolished, and thirty-one additional parking spaces would be added to the thirty-nine, there are twenty-nine existing spaces that are currently there. To the south of the site, the music block would be demolished, and a further seventy-four parking spaces would be added, creating a total of a hundred and thirty-four spaces. In addition to these, four minibus spaces, four disabled spaces, five motorcycle spaces, and twelve bicycle spaces would be created. Refuge vehicles can drive into the parking area and then reverse into the service area by the refuge bins, or they can drive in a forward direction around the car park to the south of the site and can leave in a forward direction. And this is the proposed ground floor plan. On the left, you can see the refurbished existing sports hall with store rooms on the left side elevation. In the middle of the building would be the main entrance with roller shutters, lobby, office, male and female toilets, and a hundred square metre multi-use clubroom. To the right would be a two hundred and fifty square metre fitness suite with forty-five workstations, team changing rooms with toilets and showers, two officials changing rooms each with a toilet and shower, disabled change facilities, and an additional disabled toilet, kitchen, first aid room, two equipment storage rooms, cleaner store, and multiple lockers. This section of the building would have access to the pitches. And this is the proposed first floor plan, which shows the only first floor room, which is a seventy-one square metre plant room. And these are the front sides and rear rendered elevations. And this is a three D visual drawing illustrating what the proposed sports centre would look like. The colour of the cladding and the materials have not yet been agreed and are covered by condition four. And the existing changing facilities extend twenty-five metres from the existing sports hall and have a minimum, a maximum height of five point six metres. The first four elements of the extension, which will accommodate the plant room, would have a maximum height of six metres. The single-storey element of the extension would have a maximum height of five point three metres, and the proposed extension would extend thirty-three metres from the side elevation of the sports hall. The overall scale and bulk is considered acceptable, and due to the location of the sports hall, no residential impact is considered to occur. The recommendation is approval subject to conditions set out in the report. And there are two changes to the members update. The applicant is changed to Woking Borough Council, and the number of parking spaces, as stated in the committee reports, is a hundred and twenty-five spaces, but this should be a hundred and thirty-four spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
We have two speakers registered, and the first one is Neil Jones from Woking Borough Council, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Rice Green Sports Hub, as we know, has been a leisure centre back in the day, that was then gone and derelict, and now disused, and a bit of a block in the landscape, shall we say. Myself with Andy Glencross in the green infrastructure team, I've been working on this project now for the last couple of years, trying to bring it to fruition. I've got some notes here from Andy, unfortunately couldn't make tonight, he's away on leave, so I'll read these to you, what you've put forward. Following extensive public consultation, the council developed a proposed scheme that delivers a comprehensive sports hub with excellent outdoor sports facilities, including the state-of-the-art floodlit ATP, which is currently on-site and being used. A refurbished and extended leisure centre, and adequate on-site parking to alleviate local parking issues. Phase one of the project, the outdoor sports facilities, was completed and opened to the public at late two thousand and sixteen. It is also being used extensively during the school, school year and school days by the local Oakbank School. It's a fantastic facility, with a three G sports rubber prong and pitch, which could be used for football, rugby, hockey, and all other sports. The application for commitment tonight represents an ex place of the council's vision for the site. This application is for a facility that includes fourteen changing facility, forty-five station health and fitness gym, hundred square metres club spectator room, and community room, and a refurbished Four Courts Sports Hall and car park, holding hundred forty-four cars, as Chris mentioned earlier. A point here, which I don't know if I'm allowed to bring up, I'm going to bring it up, this is Landry's wrote on his notes. He's put, it's worth noting that a further phase of the sports hub development will be brought forward by the developer over the next few years. His plan for the field to the south of the site on Hyde End Lane will be designed to deliver additional grass football, rugby pitches, and additional matchday informing car parking. The application is the result of a successful partnership between the borough, parish councils, developer, local community, including football clubs Spencer's Wood FC, Shinko Rangers FC, and the Football Foundation, who are currently trying to receive a grant from funding towards the scheme. The much-needed sports facilities will hopefully provide a generation of residents of the borough ample opportunity to enjoy more active lifestyle. Oh, thank you very much. Right, and now we have the board councillor, Barry, if you'd like to, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. Yes, as has been already mentioned, the site has had a chequered history. It's been almost hidden away from the residents of Shinkfield, in the, some, lots of people unaware of its existence, or whether, what it would use for, or anything else. And they give it use for car boot sales on occasional dates and things like that, and that's about the best that we got out of it. The changes that are being proposed will make a huge difference to the facility. And we will still need to make sure that we advertise this, and really go to town and making sure that everybody's aware that it is there. We've got lots of new development in Shinkfield, and no doubt people will be wanting to make use of facilities. I don't want it to be perceived as a glorified football pitches and other pitches facility at all. I think that the fact that we've got the fitness suite and other rooms that can be used for other things as well, means that the local community will have the opportunity to use it for slightly different purposes, which will increase the footfall and the knowledge as far as that side of it is concerned. So I'm very much in favour of approving this application, and hope that it will be very successful, and look forward to the future of it. There is one issue that I do want to raise, and that is with regards to the actual location itself. It's always been a bit tricky as far as the roadway and parking is concerned. Lots of people are aware of that, and I know that the Arrows people are quite satisfied with the situation. The problem that I've had in the past of using this facility is that it is recognised as a school, and we do need to try and make sure that we differentiate the fact that there is a leisure facility and that we've got a school there, and that people are mobbed just going in, and just getting confused about the way that it goes in there as well. And so I think we need to have good signage and so forth, to make sure that we're steering people in the right direction as far as that's concerned. And I'd highly recommend this to the committee, Chair.
Thank you very much. Chris has come back with another one point about differentiation between schools and schools.
I think they are obviously different uses. I must admit, we just had a quick look at the operation report on there, and there is an element of that, but I guess a lot of people do tend to like to go to the gym. is an envelope at that, but I guess a lot of people do tend to like to go to the gym in first thing in the morning or in the evening. Clearly in the evening is not going to be an issue outside of school hours and probably we've looked at on the basis that it is all there. There are a number of highway improvements taking place around Church Lane, Hyden Road, Bladestoke Road, as well as many new footpath cycleways as part of Hyden Lane itself is being closed off in the southern section to form a footpath cycleway through from Hyden Lane, from Hyden Road, sorry, through to Hyden Lane and then obviously a new route through the new school leading to the top end of Hyden Lane through to this, this sports facility, as well as Footpath Twenty as well, as worth remembering, that that's to the west of, to the west, that's to the west of this site running toward the back of it and that's all also being upgraded as a part of the Shinfield South End for XDL. So I think in terms of accessibility, there's many options for people to get their lock to a car. I do appreciate that there is the school there that had closed, has reopened, obviously it's not as big as it was and as far as we're concerned, we're quite comfortable with the level.
John?
Just one other thing, Chris, can we make sure mine's properly signed? Signed would just be a search.
Angus?
Thank you Chair. Antilantis has come forward now as an opportunity to provide an integrated indoor and outdoor and community facility all in one place and with the school next door. I believe this application does take account of all the access and car parking issues. We're quite sure how successful it might be, but it meets our regulations. We've already started with the ATP pitch and draining the football pitches. So I think this application does cover all those needs and hope that if we can approve it, I've definitely got my support.
Members, any other questions? I'd say this is a rare application in that there are, sorry.
Yeah, just an observation, I mean, I do support this and it's great to have a new facility. And I noticed it was said that in the next two or three years it could be further, maybe patches coming through for additions. And I think that with the loss of facilities in Reading, certainly swimming pools, it's a shame that there hasn't been some thought given for swimming pool as well. I know the cost is greater, but, you know, it's a new leisure centre. Swimming pools are disappearing, it seems, through central Reading, this is quite close. Would have been an opportunity to include that, that's an observation. I know we're not considering that at this meeting, but just a thought.
Thank you very much for that thought. I would say this is a rare application in that there are no objections at all in the report for it, so it's in everyone's he's been favourite. So if we go to members to vote on it then, recommendation is set out on page one four four approved, subject to the conditions in the agenda, there are no additional conditions in the members' update, so all those in favour will show. And that is unanimous, thank you very much members. John, could I ask you two please, please? Thank you. Right, move on to the last. We move on to the last application in the agenda which is item eleven on page one hundred and sixty-nine, which is Grovetown Park emerged. It's an application to vary conditions two, three and nine of planning set F twenty fourteen two six double one. It is before the committee as its Woking Borough Council application and the application officer is going forward. Over to you.
Thank you Chair. The site is located in the major development location in the settlement of Woolish and was under scrub land between a mobile home park and commercial units in Grovetown Avenue. In twenty fifteen, the committee approved an application for the development of the site to provide six two-bedroom dwellings which are currently under construction. Current application proposes main, sorry, minor changes to this proof scheme as a result of on-site works, namely a change to the facing brick, solar panels on the roof and replacement of hedgerow with fencing. As stated is before the committee as the act is working out limited, otherwise the scale of this development would typically be considered through delegated powers. This is the layout of the development with the six dwellings accessed from Grovetown Avenue and with gardens to the rear. Close board fencing is shown around the site as per the operations scheme. These are the proposed elevations showing the solar panels on the west elevation. And if I could refer members to page one hundred and seventy of the agenda, where you will see the list of the revised conditions. For clarification, the change to condition one is to ensure the timing for implementation remains as previously agreed and so a further three years is not granted. Condition two relates to the proposed external materials, external materials instead of seeking details to be provided at a later stage. Condition three references the proposed plan numbers which reflect the changes in this application and condition nine relates to the proposed boundary treatments instead of asking for details to be provided at a later stage. With regards to the impact of this application, no harm arises on the character of the area. The proposed brick is very similar to what was previously agreed and solar panels are considered to be limited in scale and would not detrimentally impact the area. Close board fencing is very prevalent, prevalent in the area and as such, no objection is raised to its usefulness within the scheme. No additional impact would occur with regards to neighbouring amenity or highway impacts. With no updates in the members' update, the recommendation is for approval subject to the conditions set out in the report. Thank you.
Could just remind members to stick to the changes, we're not sort of going back looking at this application again, it's only the changes and I believe we've got all members. Go to Rochelle first.
Just to let me say thank you very much for having affordable homes in Woolish, it's a very nice idea. Thank you.
John? Oh, okay. Any other members wishing to speak? No? Okay. We have then, the recommendation starts on page one sixty-nine and move on to one seventy, set out there for approval. Members, all those in favour, please show. And that is unanimous. So that ends the applications tonight.